I'll give to you. Calling to order, the municipality of Monroeville's citizens' night and agenda-setting meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. It's approximately 7:00 PM. If we would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
You may be seated. I have a roll call, please.
Mayor Grissock?
Here.
Mr. Hizzy?
Here.
Mr. Podge?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Buondo?
Here.
Mr. Graziani?
Here.
Mr. Ratcher?
Here.
Ms. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Yugus?
Here.
Mr. Sedlak?
Here.
Mr. Weldon?
Here.
Welcome, everyone. Mr. Stevenson was feeling a little under the weather, and he could not be here. Mr. Adams is celebrating Christmas for Eastern Orthodox Serbian Christmas. So Merry Christmas to our Serbian residents here in the community. We're going to open the meeting with our citizens' night remarks and comments. If there's anyone that'd like to address council, or public comment, or any municipal item, now would be your time to do so. This is the only comment period of this meeting, other than the conditional use hearing we're going to be having in a few moments. So now would be your time, if you have anything, anyone like to address council? Now would be your time to do so. Once you get here, if you just come up and you can sign in, sign your name, and if you just write your address on the sheet as well.
Hi.
Hello, and then you'll say your name for the record, and then you are a Monroeville resident?
Yes, yes. My name's April Scacera. I live on Syrah. I'm not sure this is the right forum for this, but I thought maybe, and it usually works, so I was able to come. But when our road was paved, at least Eden and Syrah, so I'm on Syrah, I think it was last fall that they did it, and it's almost like we all, all the neighbors, were thinking, like, when are they going to finish it? And then we were told it is finished. It's just a really, really bad material. I have rocks in my shoes right now, and when I wear boots, there are rocks in my shoes. Like, it's just a really bad material. When I walk in the street now, if I have tennis shoes on, I can literally feel the rocks. Like, it's just really a bad material. So I didn't know, like, you know, is there a reason for that, or are they maybe going to fix it, or, I don't know. Is this the right forum for this?
This is the right forum, so this is, that falls underneath our paving program. Annually, we do a full paving program. Every road is identified, every road is evaluated, and then from there, all the roads are graded a certain number, good to bad, and then from there, money is allocated, and depending on the money, we will address certain streets in certain ways. And from what you're describing, that street probably got a fog seal, a seal coat with fog seal, which is like a treatment where it's like, almost like a tarn chip with a seal coat over top of it to kind of lock all the stones in. It's a way to preserve the road a little bit longer. So that is the finished product. Over time, those stones wear down, or they get pushed, and then these things are all constantly evaluated, so that street over time would get addressed differently.
Because it was definitely better before they did it. You know, it was more comfortable, we didn't have rocks. If you drive up our streets now, and you look into our driveways, everybody has rocks all in their driveway because of the material that's used. Like, it's just a mess. My mom lives across the street, and she has a dog. Like, we feel bad for the dog, having to walk on that, you know? So, I mean, if there's, could we have someone, like, look at it, maybe consider to do it with a better material, or?
Well, that road will be reevaluated during our next process of the paving schedule, which starts in the spring.
Well, it will start real soon.
It will start real soon?
Soon as the snow melts.
Okay. And you get what I'm saying, though, that it's like, it was used that's made it bad.
We're very, yeah, we understand the process.
Okay.
Yeah, that treatment is far from perfect, but the price for that, we can treat a lot of roads and stretch taxpayer dollars pretty far, as opposed to like a mill and pave, which may be $300,000.
That's five times as much.
Yeah, it's five times as much to do a mill and pave per mile of road, so there's only so much money that we try to do as much treatment as possible to those roads.
Is it, are all the roads in Monroeville going to have that new?
Depends on the road, but at this point, well over half of the roads have received that treatment.
Has anyone else complained about it?
There are complaints occasionally, yes.
And you live, and Syrah's a dead end.
Yeah.
It gets much better in places as people drive over it. When the same process was on, two, three days, you don't notice it.
Oh, I mean, but we've had it since fall, and I hate it every time I go outside.
No, we understand.
Okay, all right.
Yes, with time, it hopefully will improve, but it's constantly going to be evaluated, and we'll get out there very shortly to take a look at it.
Okay, thanks.
I'll leave the floor open for anyone who'd like to address council on any municipal item. Seeing none, we're going to close the comment period and close citizens' night, and we're going to move over to our conditional use. We have a conditional use public hearing for this evening that's scheduled. Twenty-four dash three dash C, Northern Pike Partners LLC, conditional use approval. Mr. Graziani, if you could read into the record, please.
Yes. The applicant, Northern Pike Partners LLC, is requesting conditional use approval into Article 5, Section 504, Point FFFF Therapeutic Massage Facility of the Monroeville Zoning Ordinance, Number 2779, to permit the operation of a therapeutic massage business, generally body works. The property is located at 4301 Northern Pike, formerly McGinnis Sisters, and identified as tax parcel 856-S-076 in the Boulevard Zoning District.
Okay, is the applicant or its representative here? Okay, sir, welcome.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ryan Wodas. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Goldberg, Kamen, and Garvin, here on behalf of the applicant, which is noted as 4301 Northern Pike Partners LLC, with respect to the conditional use application. That's before you for public hearing and subsequent consideration. By way of just a little bit of background, I'll keep it relatively brief, this is somewhat straightforward in terms of what's being requested this evening, but I do have a couple pages that I wanted to offer.
Sure, and then, Ryan, once you pass those out, I'll get you sworn in, and we'll just, you know, for testimony, all that stuff.
Absolutely. Just get right by.
No problem.
Or save one, and you can put it in the middle there, too, so it can be on the screen, right near the middle of that access.
Oh, that'll actually show up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can share if you need more.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. The old McGinnis Sisters.
You got to call by what it once was, right?
Exactly. So this is our conditional, this is a conditional use public hearing, and, so, Mr. Wodas, right?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Wodas, so if you don't mind, if there's any in the audience that was going to add testimony, I'd ask that they be sworn in as well. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. So if you want to just go on with your presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. So, by way of a little bit of background, everyone knows, again, it's a former McGinnis Sisters property. This has undergone quite a transformation since this was acquired by the current property owner, in terms of upgrades to facade, multiple changes to the parking lot, the addition of the Starbucks facility on that property as well. So I'm sure council's somewhat familiar with the site. This is a conditional use hearing for the relocation of an existing therapeutic massage facility. I do have a slide in the deck that will show where this current operator is located, which is approximately less than 500 feet from, yeah, from this site. So we're basically just moving to this site. That operator's been in existence, started offering about 2014. They'll be taking approximately 1,675 square feet of space in the subject property. So, in looking at what I had just passed out, the first page just showing an image of the site itself. This will be located sort of to the left of that image, and, again, what actually was the former McGinnis, McGinnis space. Second slide shows just an aerial. This is from the Allegheny County.
Flip the slide, we had that.
Would it show up on?
It just was, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've done this before. Should be good.
Yeah, Jared, if you don't mind?
Okay, just position it there.
Perfect.
All right. So this is just the blotter from the Allegheny County Tax Assessment website, showing an outline of the property. Again, most recent modifications that have been made, but this is what the county records provided. Next slide here shows sort of the update to the site itself. Again, 4301, this is the location where the proposed use will be located. Starbucks located to the front. The site itself does have frontage along Northern Pike, and then this is the existing car wash facility. To the east of the site's McDonald's, and then, again, to sort of the southwest is the intersection of Moss Side and Northern Pike. And the last slide here is just going ahead and showing, if you can see here, the lower portion where my finger is there, it's noted that's the current location of this existing facility. Again, just relocating basically across the street. It's provided in Section 359-54 is the conditional use criteria that's applicable to this proposed use. And again, that is under subsection FFFF. There are eight items that are identified there, the first being a traffic impact study and parking demand analysis. As I had noted, this facility, or this site itself, recently underwent some modifications with respect to the providing of the Starbucks. At the time that went in, a full traffic study and parking demand analysis was done for the site. That took into consideration the existing retail, which consists of a little over 23,000 square feet, which is the former McGinnis property and the adjacent retail. At the time, that traffic impact analysis and parking analysis deemed that the Starbucks location itself would not create adverse impacts on traffic in the vicinity, and there was adequate parking, as we're just basically refilling the existing retail and not adding new space. That study itself supports the position that, basically, this won't create any adverse impacts from a parking standpoint or a traffic standpoint. The next criteria is that we'd have to provide appropriate licensing from government agencies. Again, this is an existing facility. We will go ahead and provide that to the municipality prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
Ryan, if I may?
Yes.
What licenses are they required to have?
From what I understand, it would just be through, there's one that's through the state.
Like an occupational license?
Correct.
For the people that perform the service?
That's the only one that I'm aware that they would be required to have. So we'll provide that.
Each therapist will have their state certification in?
I believe that's correct, yes. I think the facility probably has one, and then it would be, but I can verify, and we'll provide whatever's required under Pennsylvania law. The next is that the facility would have frontage and direct access to a public road. As noted, the site itself fronts on Northern Pike, has direct access to Northern Pike. Fourth item is that waste collection and storage areas will be located 50 feet from the nearest building. So this use will operate with the existing refuse that's on-site, which is located greater than 50 feet from even the property lines of the facility. So they'll be utilizing what's currently being, you know, the current operations of the site. The fifth is that mechanical equipment should be screened from view of adjoining properties. The mechanical equipment had all been replaced as part of the remodeling of the site. It's all located on the roof, and there is parapet that goes around it, so it does screen it from adjacent properties. The sixth relates to a list of certain other uses that we need to be located greater than 500 feet from, which would be existing schools, public playground, public park, amongst some other items. We did go ahead and do an evaluation. This use, as proposed, would be greater than 500 feet from those uses, and I actually would note that this will actually move it further from the high school complex. They're actually moving further from an existing public school. The seventh is that we would be required, the building would be required to comply with International Building Code. Again, as noted, the property's been fully remodeled. It's fully in compliance with IBC. And the last would be that signage would have to comply with your municipal regulations. We're not proposing signage as part of this application. If the signage were to be modified, we would be coming back and filing the appropriate paperwork with the municipality for that signage to be installed. So that's the criteria that is applicable to this conditional use. Happy to address any questions or comments that council may have.
Yeah, I have a question. With this building being so close to the termite, when they do the revamp of this interchange, is it going to affect this property at all?
We would hope it wouldn't, but I can't say it. I've never seen final plans on that. We'll cross that bridge when it comes.
Any other questions, council? If there's anyone from the audience who'd like to add testimony or ask questions? The records show that there are none. Anything else, Ryan?
Nothing further from the applicant.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
See you on Tuesday.
Is there a motion to exit the conditional?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, we're out of the public hearing. It is now closed, and we're going to move over to our agenda-setting meeting for our regular council meeting next Tuesday, the 14th. I have an executive session announcement, that council conducted an executive session this evening, Tuesday, January 7th, from 6:15 to approximately 7:00 PM, for matters pertaining to legal, personnel, and/or real estate. Council legislative action, if any, shall be taken at next Tuesday, January 14th, council Council, the minutes for us to be considered, for you to consider next week, will just be the session meeting of November 7th, 2024. Any questions or comments about those minutes? Hearing none, reports of the tax collections. Any questions or comments about the tax collections for this month? Hearing none, moving on. List of bills and budget transfers, council. Questions or comments? Hearing none, we're moving on to the payroll report. Questions or comments this evening? Hearing none, moving over to motions. We have two that we will consider.
The first one deals with, we would like council to consider advertising to enact or reenact the ordinance as it relates to non-union employees. So we have a couple contracts that occurred last year, and there's some housekeeping items that we need to address in the ordinance. And, of course, the ordinance then would be considered in February.
Okay, questions and comments, council?
That's just our normal housekeeping.
Correct.
Duties for that, for non-exempt employees. Right, yeah.
Next motion.
And, of course, that one would deal with accepting the resignation for the chair of the planning commission. Mr. Bertoni?
Very good.
Okay.
Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, moving over to our, the next item that we will consider for next Tuesday is what we just heard about, the conditional use approval for the 24-3-C Northern Pike. It's already been read into the record, and the planning commission recommended approval with conditions. Council moving through the agenda, resolutions. The first, well, all of them, all four of them, all revolve around appointments to boards, commissions, and authorities.
We discussed these in December as well, I think, as we were reviewing year-end housekeeping.
Right.
Yeah, and these are all resolutions to accept everybody's been nominated, then, correct? Guys, we accept to act on all of them.
Yep, all four have already been nominated, and all four, they have to stay nominated for a month, and then they'll be appointed at least a month later, so that's what we're going to be looking at next Tuesday. Any questions about the, for boards, commissions, and authorities?
Nominated.
Very good, moving on. Reports of municipal staff, Mr. Ratcher?
I have one thing right now, and this is just a little housekeeping thing for Mr. Weldon. And I know you've been making a list and checking it twice on things that we need to do with respect to the new zoning ordinance, and in that section, triple F, six, it's talking about therapeutic massage facilities, but at the end of six, it says, "or other actual place of regularly scheduled religious worship established prior to the proposed substance abuse treatment." So it's referring to substance abuse treatment instead of referring to therapeutic massage activities, so.
We'll get that revised. We have a list of revisions for the zoning ordinance, and we can just add that in there.
I really did read it.
Tonight, actually.
Yeah, after the revision, this is just a curiosity question.
Great job, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Mr. Graziani?
Yeah, I just want to highlight a couple things off of my manager's report. Jared, if you could help me out, we'll just quickly go through these. What I've tried to do with the manager's report, working for a number of local governments over the years, is just focus on what I'm looking at in the next six months. So quickly, Jared, if we scroll through these, the first two items, that, these are exactly as they are listed on the manager's report. We're looking at hiring an assistant manager, hopefully, February, March. There's been a lot of teammates involved in this effort, and we're doing our due diligence. We have 55 applicants, and we have a group of nine that we've done an interview session with, and we're looking to narrow that down to a smaller group and move forward on that. With the 25 budget, we're transforming the TV department and the communications department, and that includes Jared becoming a director of the communications department, and then hiring a new staff person there. Jared and I are working on a job description, hopefully get that advertised soon. Next slide, please. So we'll be looking at, as well, with Parks and Rec, this is a budget item, you added another staff person there, and we're advertising the director position now. Staff is able to apply if they'd like to. If that's not filled by a staff member, you know, it's filled externally, we will, one way or another, have another person in that department. There's three there now, we're looking to add four, that's a budgeted item. So currently, that advertisement is on the street. It does require a bachelor's degree and a field-related degree, as well, the other requirements are listed online. Deputy police chief, haven't had this in, I'm not sure, 15 or more years, we've been without a deputy police chief, but you authorized the hiring of that, and we're going to be looking at doing that soon, moving that forward. Couple council members have been involved in that process. Next slide, please. So, restart the K-9 unit, also something we haven't had here in a while, but we're looking at one to two officers possibly, in having a special unit for K-9, and we're looking for that to move quickly, by the beginning of the second quarter, possibly having that all happening. And we're talking getting dog, getting officers, getting vehicles, there's lots going on to make that happen. Also, another big move in 2025 is moving the 911, just to the bottom level of this building to, not the complete bottom, but the first back level to the main level here, and hopefully be working with the county DA to make some enhancements to our 911, and that's a big item. The next is really working with the department heads to get the capital budget out in front of you, and that relates to the next slide, there's a couple of items. We have discussed a public works facility. I use the word new. It could be new, in a new location, it could be new at its existing location, but the two of those and the next one are really tied together. It's been 25 years since we've had a building improvement in this community, and it was this building was built in 1999 and 2000, but the library, those buildings are old, if you will, and need rehabilitation or need attention, but our public works facility needs more than that, and we need to have a real good discussion about what that looks like. You know, whether it's a demolition at its existing location, or rebuilding in a new location altogether. And, of course, associated that would be bond financing. So those three items, the one from the previous slide, and these two items are related. It's about getting those all in front of council. So what I'm going to lead with is larger capital needs. You know, the 20-year, look at the pavement management, fleet management, other capital needs, including IT in this building, and then look at some of the building needs just that are facing us. Carpet, this carpet has not been changed since we moved in, and it shows. So there's a lot that you need to do for good housekeeping that are capital-related. We want those to be before you as you start to look at the more comprehensive looks, which would include building enhancements at the senior center, or this building, or at the library. Next slide, please. Okay, so these ones, again, are the same kind of things, you know, looking at the strategic plan itself. We're finishing some municipal park security enhancements, particularly at the community Park West, that's part of the security enhancements we're doing. That last item is really important, it does tie back to the ones we had in the previous slide, which are the parks and open space. If you remember, we hired environmental planning and design to do a parks and open space update, and we're wrapping that up and hoping to get stuff in front of you soon. Next slide, after this. If you're not out of breath, I am. Look at that first one. We are ending a five-year agreement with our fire companies, and related to capital, we need to update that. And, as you know, a lot has changed from the year 2020. The lead time to buy equipment and the cost to buy equipment has skyrocketed, and the thought entering into the five-year agreement is we would be able to refurbish equipment and get longer life out of that equipment. And it seems like the conventional wisdom is that's not maybe the way to move forward. But that's what the agreement contemplates, and the agreement does not contemplate buying new vehicles or ordering new vehicles, it contemplates a replacement schedule that we have followed to a certain extent. That's the new ladder truck we got at number four, but when it comes to the refurb, we haven't really followed the schedule on that. But that's the agreement we have, and we need to renew the agreement before we do anything more, and that's a lot that's got to happen, and, again, working with council members on that. And then, lastly, you know, just starting work on the 2026 budget. Josie and I have a philosophy that the work on next year's budget begins the day after the one's adopted. We asked for you this evening to turn in your books for your budgets. We're hoping to populate those with the budget you adopted in December, as well as the year end numbers, so you'll be able to see the year end numbers of 2024, as well as the actual adopted budget, and use that for the rest of the meetings throughout the year. So just wanted to run through that quickly. Thank you, Jared, for doing that. That's the manager's report. We're trying to focus on what are we doing the next six months, and there's a lot on the plate, including some new hires, and a lot of capital budget planning that needs to occur. We'll be looking for your participation, of course, to accomplish these things. Any questions?
Very good. Yes, sir, thank you very much. Mr. Yugus?
Yeah, one item. Sending kudos out to the public works department. Mother Nature has been dealing us with some snow events that have been pretty long and tenuous, so they've been doing a good job.
Well said, and we definitely all agree, and we definitely get a lot of feedback from residents that think the same way, so, yeah, please, please tell them that we're very happy for what they do for the community.
Will do.
Ms. Rock?
Nothing.
Very good.
She's going to say something.
Start at this end, reports of our council members. Mr. Buondo?
So, I'd first echo what Mr. Yuga said, it is, the public works has done a great job. They really always do a great job with our roads here in Monroeville, and you do hear it, we do hear from residents that the roads are well taken care of during these large snow events. And while we're talking about snow, let's turn to a warmer topic. Jared, can you do the Fourth of July?
How clever, that is. All right, all right. Very good.
So, this year, we're doing this a little bit earlier this year. The logo design contest is for K through 12 students for the Fourth of July. The theme this year is unity in the community. There's a couple different ways you can enter the contest, and what this is, is we're asking kindergarten through 12, 12th grade students to create a logo for the Fourth of July. What we're doing is to actually put that on our promotional material. Normally, we start this a little bit later, like March or April, and then we end up with a winner in May or June, and we've already had our promotional materials out, but this year, we're starting it early. We'd like to have submissions in by February 28th. There's two different ways you can submit it. One, you can drop them off at the library, and you can put that to the attention of, I'm going to say Alice, and I don't want to say her last name wrong, but put it to the attention of Alice, or you can submit it online to Lillian, to Dominic. The email address is right there. And with that, that's what I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Buondo. Mr. Williams?
If any resident has been to the Monroeville post office, you'll realize that post office probably has one of the worst public accesses of all the post offices. probably has one of the worst public accesses of all the post offices in, to in the area. They took the curb box out where you could drive up and put your mail in. And what really brought this to my attention, a few months ago, I was on crutches, and I had to mail a letter, and it was raining, and it was cold, and to pull up there, get out of the car with them crutches, and hobble up to the door, they got mailboxes at the door, well, I might as well go inside and mail it. They're just not very accountable for anybody in a wheelchair, on crutches, or anybody that has to hobble. So, I called Summer Lee's office, never got a return phone call, and my next step would be ask the public to do a writing campaign to your congresspeople, and maybe they can do some changes. But I called the main office, they had the director at Monroeville call me, says, "We're not putting that mailbox back out there, it's a safety issue." Well, do something else, but anyhow, it upsets me that they could care less about the public, and they need to do something. So, a letter-writing campaign, campaign might be in order. The other thing is, over the holidays, I drive up Route 22, and I was really astonished that there was no holiday decorations on the whole strip. Usually, people really get into the holiday season, but it was drab and dark, and I just hope next year, our business community steps up to the plate and does something spectacular for the community. I wanna thank Len's involvement on the Planning Commission, and I wish you good luck and Godspeed in your future endeavors, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Cruck?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Poach?
First of all, again, Merry Christmas to everyone, our Orthodox friends, and to Mike and his family as well. Don't think anything else pending for this evening, we'll save it for next week.
Mr. Hizzy?
Yeah, I just wanna say Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and I wanna thank Debbie Uzo and Rabbi Shapiro.
Oh, yeah.
For inviting us to the Gelp Drop. It was a very, it was a great event. Other than that, I have nothing.
It was, you're right, Mr. Hizzy, it was, it was a fun, you know, celebrating Hanukkah at the community park, and everyone that was involved, all the sponsors that helped with that on, it was a really nice community event put on by the mayor of Monroeville. And as Mr. Poach said, Merry Christmas to Serbian residents, and a Happy New Year to everybody, and with that, I'd like to seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Move second.
All in favor?
I'm opposed.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you, and good night.